We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for our March twelfth Board of Commissioners meeting. We will commence with opening ceremonies, including the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise. Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is so adopted. We will start with public comments. We have a list of folks that have signed up for public comments. Your comments are restricted to three minutes. They're directed at the board and not an individual. And they must be civil. So please, come on up. We have, first up, Doug Lacamped. Yes. Lacamped. He's tall. Do we have another mic?
Yeah, this is good. Uh, yeah, so just real quick while I'm here, WAA is on the list for the presentation tonight, so I just want to give a brief background of who I am and what I've been doing with WAA. I moved to Waxahachie in twenty ten. I've been with the WAA in some capacity, whether it's been baseball, flag football, soccer, or basketball. For about nine years, I think my first season as a coach was in twenty fifteen. And I've literally been coaching with a bunch of these folks over here ever since. I've migrated up in my volunteerism with the WAA to mainly in the baseball world, join the baseball committee and have been running as the baseball commissioner for the last year or so. I think I did it, started in December of twenty twenty-two. So that's, we'll be giving a presentation, but I just want to give a kind of a brief background on why I'm here and to give you just the information on just overall WAA baseball specifically. We have, for me, volunteers, over a hundred and twenty people that volunteer. It's a great group of folks and we want to continue on providing the great game of baseball, the way we've been doing it for so long. So we'll talk a little bit about that in the presentation.
Thank you. Next up, we have Pete Hendrickson.
Evening. Thank you for having us. Also with WAA, just a brief background, about myself, I've been here five years. Been associated with Waxahachie Athletic Association since day one as a coach, as a board member. I'm also a local business owner. So I'm a turf specialist. We have a turf care company. Spent time working with Charlotte Knights. I spent considerable time with the board in the field at Nesbit Park. And it's really my specialty. So I know there'll be a presentation later on. There'll be some references to me. Happy to answer any questions. But appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. John Brundus. Brundus? Apologize.
No worries. Yeah, I've been, Todd called me in the parking lot today, Ferris Theater. I've been with WAA since I moved here thirteen years ago, fourteen years ago. Coach, on the board, crew basketball. I haven't really dealt with the town that much, but, um, know the people I come across do it out of the goodness of their heart. I think we only have, in soccer, we only have a few paid positions. All the money that is put into the program is spent on the kids, on facilities, trying to partner with the town. Make things better, just for the kids' experience. I travel a lot around for all different and I just hope, like, going forward, the town can support the WA organization. We have really good people and every one of them is just trying to do the best they can for the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Savage.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having me. A little background for myself, so I'm kind of specifically only baseball. I've been here since two thousand fifteen. My son played one year of soccer. Another son played two years of baseball. But since then, I've been, you know, the Joe of everything at baseball. So I'm there every day. I think John is probably the only guy who beats me from amount of time spent at Nesbit. But just to give some background, you know, when I first saw the fields in two thousand fifteen or sixteen, huge improvements, walkways, restrooms, snack shacks. You know, like incredible improvements to the park itself. You know, that's been really great. I've heard from Dina that lights on Field Three are out there. Hopefully it's still gonna happen. At least the baseball side, we are prepared to continue the field maintenance agreement. Like, we have fields, they meet our needs. We gotta put work into them. We understand that. Centrally located, parking, you know, checks a lot of the boxes. Near a school, near, you know, some of the residential communities. It's pretty good. Over the past two years, we've gotten a much better understanding of the finances, how we can make sure we have enough revenue, make sure we've got money to pay for the maintenance. We got much better relationships with vendors between, you know, gentlemen cutting the grass, other people who came in and redid the fields when they got flooded. Carolina Greens, I'm sure you'll hear more about them later. We meet monthly with Parks and Rec to go over their concerns, our concerns, to kind of work collaboratively, to kind of make sure we continue to get both sides to keep getting things better down there. Now, end of the day, the field's in a floodplain. Okay? It floods up. It's not good. We probably put fifty-three thousand dollars in over the summer in August. I think we just put in another fifteen or seventeen based on the flooding in December. Basically washed out Field Number Four. So, you know. And, you know, the town, you know, didn't put a penny in any of that. We coordinated it all through the vendors, getting the stuff, making sure the town was aware that, you know, trucks would be here. We do all that kind of stuff. So basically, that's kind of say, you know, I feel as though there's a path forward, reasonable parties on both sides, can probably get together, figure out the responsibility map, you know, keep having safe, good fields for these kids to play on. And no baseball fields that I know of look like Nesbit Park right now. Nothing. Not even close. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Sean Strickland.
Hey, my name is Sean Strickland. I've been living here for about five years. During this time, all of my kids have played some WA sport at some point. Whether it's soccer, volleyball now is a big one. I'm actually volunteering because I get pulled into that wonderful mess. Where we have about two hundred kids and orchestrating all that is a huge challenge. And what I'm gonna say is, WAA, for me, when I think of Waxahachie, is the heart of it. These kids, seeing every single one getting to play, every single one not being benched. We have rules. We are like, hey, before the next player gets out there, the whole team goes through a full rotation. And then you just keep that up. Even during soccer, baseball, doesn't matter which league it is. We're here for the kids and you will never see more heart for these kids. When I look all across North Carolina, Charlotte, Weddington, all those leagues, you'll literally, if you compare them, you see that the heart of the difference, there's no difference. WAA is here for these kids. And doing what they do at the quality and the caliber, it just is unmatched. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Don Retta.
Soccer field, so. Trying to do my best. I've been in Charlotte soccer crowd for thirty-five years, all over Charlotte area, four or five different clubs. And about eleven years ago, Jeff McCarter, who runs the soccer program, asked me to come and be here at Waxahachie. And it's been phenomenal. I am now the director of micro and EDP, which is three-year-olds to seven-year-olds. And I'm lucky enough to be a grandpa and I coached my granddaughter's team. So, and we have forty-two teams, three hundred and forty-plus players. And everything is done volunteer-wise, okay? There are no coaches that are nothing but mom and dad, a couple of grandma and grandpas. And it's fantastic. I started, like I said, about eleven years ago and actually there were two players that I coached that ended up coming back to the club and actually coaching soccer, a team, for a couple of seasons when they were twenty-one, twenty-two years old. It is strictly a family-run organization from top to bottom. Like I said, we have forty-two teams. We have volunteer coaches doing all of that. Nesbit Park is our home park. We're there for practices and games. If you ever want to see something like this gentleman had said about what the community thinks, come down on a Saturday to between nine and twelve and watch ten soccer games going on with children from the ages of three to seven. It's phenomenal. Everyone's there cheering them on. They're having a great time. The coaches, since they're moms and dads, do a great job. Oh, hey, I only have five today. So-and-so is sick. Oh, don't worry. I'll give you two of my players and then we'll play. And it's all about what we like to call, it's all about activity and getting comfortable with themselves, their teammates, and soccer. And it's in that order. So I just, it's great. And they take really good care of the fields. I know for a fact that, you know, I went up to make sure the fields were usable after the rain we had over the weekend. So it's constantly checked and monitored to make sure that we're not, A, hurting the fields, but also B, not having young kids out there in the puddles and all that kind of stuff. So I can't tell you anymore other than, like I said, I've been around for a long, long time and this is a great, great community of soccer. And I can tell you the baseball, softball, everything else they do is the same way. Because I have kids playing multiple sports and, hey, can I come, can we practice on Thursday? Because I'm gonna do T-ball on Tuesday and I want to play both games, teams. So it's just a lot of fun. And I've really fully enjoyed myself and I will, like I said, it's just, you just can kind of see everything grow. And the kids that I started back that were three years old that are now, some of them are eight, some of them are twelve, some are fourteen, and they're still playing ball. And they're still loving it. So WAA and Waxahachie Soccer, they all do a really great job. And it's a pleasure to be associated with them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up is the incomparable Judy Davis.
Thank you. I'm Judy Davis, the crazy old lady. My, I just have two requests, formal public request. And thank you for your service, all of you. Request number one, a non-legal breathalyzer for the social district, only as a guidance. It can be encased in like a defibrillator kind of case. Just to kind of keep, give people a guidance, just in case they partake too much alcohol and you don't want them on the streets, misbehaving in the neighborhoods or dropping. I don't drink alcohol because I'm diabetic. It's got sugar in it. I go to a Southern Baptist church. I don't need it. I'm not allergic to it. However, I'm a former nurse, retired nurse, and the medicinal benefits of alcohol and the original native Wasaki Indians used it for medicine. So I support it, but I also support a breathalyzer. We can do a fundraiser, whatever, legally, but as a non-legal advisor for people that are wondering what their alcohol blood level is. My grandmother, Grandmother Davis, Mary Davis on Providence Street, started the first USO in downtown Upper Street, Waxahachie. This was a dry county in the nineteen forties, but she wanted beer and other beverages available for the soldiers coming through. She thought they deserve it. If they're eighteen, they are fighting, they're, you know, risking their lives for our country, they deserve to have a beverage. Because that would be kind of like a medicine if they need it, if they wanted it. But that's my request is a breathalyzer in the social district downtown, kind of like a defibrillator. And then my request number two is vetted people that used to work here, they're volunteer on boards, voted in, voted out, whatever. I think they should need a first bid to have jobs in any of the town of Waxahachie jobs or whatever, boards, whatever. Because they have a lot of experience, a lot of skill sets, a lot of knowledge, a lot of ancestries. I'm not applying for the jobs, so don't worry. I've got plenty. I'm carpooling. I'm doing volunteer at my church. I pick up trash. But I just think if you would vet some of these people walking around here, because you've got some amazing volunteers too that might work part-time and that would save you a lot of time when you're hiring people. Also, thank you for all the volunteers that do the soccer, because I watch two grandsons play for the Waxahachie and I love it. I was one of the grandmas, the crazy grandmas. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Jeff Zobel. Must be present to win.
How are we? Are we doing well? Good. Sorry, baseball practice. It's a terrible thing. Um, what can I say? What would you like to begin? What have I missed?
You got three minutes.
Oh, three minutes. All right.
This is public comment.
Uh, Jeff Zobel, Green Resource. I've been in sports turf consulting and since two thousand and one. So everything from professional sports fields to rec like we have here. I still try to do my part to help the kids as much as I can. And that's mostly it. So it's twenty-three years. And it's fun. I like playing in the dirt. I haven't grown up. But you guys have any questions for me?
Not yet.
Nothing? Okay. Gotcha. That's it?
Thank you.
Todd, I see you're on here, but you're on the agenda, so you'll have a few minutes there. We'll skip then to Pamela Murphy.
I guess my subject's gonna be really dull after Waxahachie Athletic Association and breathalyzers and everything. I just wanted to talk about the agenda item, about the procedures. And it's funny because about, I don't know, three meetings ago, I was actually gonna speak, ask some questions about the procedures in your meetings. And then I got sidetracked with signage or something like that. And then I started doing some research after Commissioner McMillan talked about open meetings. And I'm looking at the procedures and reading, you know, state documents. Lo and behold, I look at the agenda for tonight and on the agenda is an update to the procedures. So my original question was why the town had dropped the general comments off the agenda at the end of the meeting. Because I think it's really good that after we've heard everything, we should be able to get up and maybe have a few more comments. So there was always, in the past, we had, the agenda included, agenda item comments, you know, at the beginning, before the new and old business, and then general comments at the end. And I was confused when I saw that you were updating the procedures to match how the meeting is being run now. Because the meeting wasn't being run according to the procedures. And so I looked back and looked at all the agendas from two thousand and eighteen forward. And lo and behold, somewhere in two thousand twenty-one, that second meeting was just dropped off the agenda. And there was no discussion. There was no, you know, procedure change that I could see. So I, you know, I see where tonight you have suggested that you combine the agenda items and the general questions at the beginning. And you've already done it because that's how the signup sheet is. So I just want to know if, when you have your discussion, why you felt like the two comment sections, you know, the agenda items and the general comments that could be about anything, were removed from the meeting agenda. And do you know what the purpose of those were? And then if you're okay with having it all, you know, at the beginning with the agenda and general comments, are you going to limit that to the fifteen minutes? And if so, if we have spent hours and hours looking at an agenda item and want to speak on it, will that take priority over just general comments where somebody, you know, wants to bring up a new subject, you know, to your attention? And that's, that's basically where I was going with this. But I do want to say, you know, I didn't raise my kids around here. I've been here for twenty-five years. But boy, the WAA sounds phenomenal. I think we should give them all a big hand for what they're doing. In case you don't do it later. But thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Pamela. Okay. Thank you very much for all your comments. Next item is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is so approved. Next up, we have recognitions. I believe Chief Dexter Wilson has a couple of recognitions tonight.
Good evening. I'm Chief Wilson and I'm not with WAA. Sorry, guys. Uh, so the first award we have for this year is Officer of the Year. Officer Casey Jennings was sworn in as a Waxahachie Police Officer February twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two. Since that time, he's been an officer whose dedication, integrity, and unwavering commitment to the, to to the, to a public service has earned him the reputation amongst his peers of being one of the role models at the police department. Two thousand and twenty-three was no different, and for this reason, he has been voted Officer of the Year by his peers. Officer Jennings has exemplified excellence in every facet of his work, demonstrating compassion, leadership, and steadfast resolve to uphold the law and ensure the safety of his community. His selection for the award serves as a testament to his exceptional contributions to the department and our community here in Waxaw. He is truly deserving of this honor, and his legacy of service will continue to inspire others for years to come. I'm positive. So Officer Jennings, Officer of the Year. Don't go anywhere, because we've got to keep going. Good job. The next award is the DWI Arrest Award for the Top DWI Arrest. Uh, Officer Jennings during two thousand and twenty-three stopped twenty-six impaired drivers and took them off the streets. Uh, so in honor of your outstanding, and outstanding contribution to citizens of Waxaw for enforcing the crime of DWI, present you with the Top DWI Arrest Award. The last award, uh, that I'll be presenting, uh, representing the police department will be for the Top Gun Award, presented to Detective Patrick Helms, in recognition for shooting the highest scores during the yearly firearms qualifications. Uh, Detective Helms is a narcotics detective, so if you could just imagine, he's here. Uh, so I will be presenting this to him, but I wanted to make it known that he was the Top Feud for the Year, and, uh, congratulations to Patrick Helms.
Congratulations. Thank you. Uh, next up tonight, we have a presentation, um, featuring, you guessed it, the WAA. Um, Todd Dincheck, we have the presentation queued up? Yep, it's ready to go. Anyway, we can get it on the screen in front of us? Alright. I'm going to go ahead and, uh, if it's alright, I'm going to go ahead and call up my, my Robin, uh, Doug, if you would join me. That's alright. So, alright, sorry, we didn't wear the tights tonight, but, uh, um, before I, before I go on, I just want to do a little introduction of myself. Todd Dincheck, uh, just want to thank God for the talents that he's given me. Want to thank my wife, Michelle, who's here, for giving me the time, uh, to do all this. Uh, the energy, the voice, she often tells me that I have the loudest voice on the field, on the court, a lot of people, Sean is nodding his head, saying that I have that as well. Um, as you guys have all heard, we have a lot of vendors that do a lot of work for us. Our vendors take care of our fields, um, they do a lot of the, um, a lot of the mowing for us, um, you know, they, they take care of the grass, they do a lot of the aeration, the fertilization. But we do bring in a lot of the professionals of you, as you've heard, uh, Jeff Zobel, who is here, Pete Hendrickson, um, they help put together a lot of the plans and work alongside the vendors. So we have a lot of professionals that are within the WAA family that have that knowledge. So, um, what I want to emphasize to everyone is that we do have a lot of volunteers that put a lot of time in, but we tap into the resources that those people have and the knowledge that they have. We're not just putting volunteers out onto the fields, asking them to grab a lawnmower and push it. So wanted to thank everyone for representing us, I wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners, wanted to thank WAA and all the listeners that are out there in TV land right now, listening to me now, but also listening, um, you know, because I'm sure there's going to be hundreds of thousands of viewers, um, after they hear about this. Um, I hope to answer everyone's questions. Um, if I can't answer them, that's why I've got Doug here next to me, um, Superman. Um, want to clarify, uh, some confusion and continue to grow a great organization and great people that are dedicated to what they do. And I know you've seen a, a small sample of that. Um, we've got our forty-fifth anniversary logo up there, um, so we're prematurely putting that out. Next year will be our forty-fifth anniversary of existence, so we're hoping that we can invite a lot of people from the town of Waxaw to help celebrate our forty-fifth anniversary alongside us. We're really, really excited about that. We really want to get a lot of window clings, some magnets that are already on order to help celebrate that forty-fifth year of existence. We're really, really excited about that. So why are we here today? We want to explain who WAA is. Volunteerism at WAA. Field usage, and then I put a question there, overuse. We want to clarify that. The Field Usage Agreement, or we're going to call it the FUA here in, at Nesbit Park. And then we want to clarify some information that was provided to the Board of Commissioners back on January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And by the way, thank you for celebrating my birthday on January twenty-fifth, um, by having that meeting. We want to define the areas of responsibility, the timing of repairs needed at the fields, and some other things as well. But why are we here today? We're here for the kids. So I put a little graphic in here, and I hope you guys can all see that. We've got the Waxaw population growth versus the red line of WAA registration growth. So you can see there that right at COVID, we had a big dip. We had negative growth, a negative fourteen percent. But there were a lot of people that decided to high-tail it out of the big cities, up in the northeast, and they came down this way, there was a big migration down. Then what happened, coming out of COVID, a lot of people decided to come back, alright, they had that cabin fever, they wanted to get out. And we saw a lot of kids on the fields that were required to wear masks, or we had kids on the courts that had to wear masks. Me myself, as a thirty-one-year veteran basketball official, I had to use an electronic whistle and wear a mask over my face. But everyone wanted to be back out, and we did it. Why? Because we love the sport. Joe Coffey, who joined us here today, he had to wear a mask. He's a veteran official of several different sports. He didn't get a chance to speak today, but I want to recognize him. He put a lot of time and effort into building some courts that we play volleyball in and basketball in now. But you can see the growth of Waxaw isn't keeping up with the pace of the registration growth of the kids that we have. And in turn, we need more fields. Yep, exactly. Thank you, John. We queued that one up really well. So res- resources are needed. That's the struggle, right? And it's not just land for ball fields. We've got the sewer connections that we've talked about, we've got schools that people are talking about, we've got expansion of roads that people are talking about, and we've all got that going, we've all got that, right, in our plans. But let's talk today about some fields and other things. So the solution, WA is beginning a search for additional fields, and we'd like to work with the town to purchase land that you're not being able to use to build on. Things like floodplain, alright? We know that there are some, there are some disadvantages to that. Mike talked about it, Doug did, and talked about it a little bit. Alright, we do have times where we put dirt down, and a couple months later, what does it do? It washes away, and it's sitting right now, you can go to Nesbit Park. Where is it sitting, Mike? On the other side of the fence, right? But why do we do it? We do it for the love of the kids. And it's fixed now. Right. And we've got a big, great sandbox for the kids. That's the beauty of it, we added a sandbox. Overview of WAA. So let's break it down a little bit. WAA, at the core, thirteen volunteer board members. I listened to the last presentation, and we talked about, or you guys talked about, how many open positions are there? Guess what? None. We're full. Volunteerism is alive and well at WAA. Well over, that's a conservative number in that second bullet point there, three hundred and fifty-plus volunteer coaches and assistant coaches. Our offerings are plentiful. I started volleyball because I felt that the ladies' side needed a sport of their own, another sport of their own outside of girls' softball. We couldn't go outside because we don't have enough fields, so we had to go inside. We had to go inside because we couldn't go outside, but the ladies needed a sport of their own. Recreation and competitive levels in different sports, multiple seasons throughout the year, and our experience is unmatched. We have board members and coaches, and they consist of college and professional athletes, former athletes, we still think that we're current athletes. We have sports officials. I'm a thirty-one-year veteran basketball official, twenty-one years in volleyball, twenty-one years in soccer. Students of sports psychology to aid in the education of teaching and training youth sports. I often tell people that kids are not just a key lock that you can stick a key in and turn, and wow, they just open right up, and you can figure them out, right? They're a combination, they're like a master lock, you got to figure each one of them out. But once you figure out that combination and they unlock, it's the most beautiful thing, because they figure it out, the light bulb goes on, and you just run with it. And I really feel, sorry, I'm getting really dry too, but I really feel that it's very difficult to find special people like that, and we've anchored that at WAA, and I really don't think anybody really does it better. So I'm going to let Doug talk a little bit about this slide, I'm going to let him talk a, a slide early so I can get a little bit of water here. But, uh, Doug, why don't you talk a little bit about this next slide here?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the, at least the, the baseball side, since that's what I'm more geared towards. Uh, I, I mentioned earlier, we got a team of about over a hundred and twenty volunteers consistently with, with baseball, that includes all of our parent coaches, all of our, our committee members that, that help run the baseball league. Um, one of the ideas, uh, floated in the January twenty-fifth meeting was to, uh, for, for the town to take over the maintenance of the fields. And I think it's a bad idea because we, we know what we're doing, we manage the fields well, uh, and some examples of that is, we, if the town, if it's raining over the weekend, we have a group of volunteers that will move mountains if it means that their kids are not going to play baseball the next day. I have had people out on the fields on a Friday night at eleven-thirty at night with flashlights, hoses, electrical cords, pumping puddles out of, of the field so that they can play baseball the next morning. If the town were to manage those fields, it's very quickly going to be canceled, the kids are not going to be playing, right? Um, we also installed sod, we had big, Mike alluded to this earlier, we had a big, uh, uh, project on, on the Nesbit baseball fields to install sod and, and grass, um, on those fields, and with no irrigation, because the irrigation doesn't work. We had an army of volunteers that went out there three to four times a day with hoses and, and to, to water those. We asked the town for support, we didn't get it. So we were out there three to four times a day watering those fields, and now they look phenomenal. I've been, I, I mentioned earlier, I've been doing this for nine years, I've been on those baseball fields for nine years, longer than some of you have been Waxaw, and those fields have never looked better. Uh, and it's all due to our volunteers. And we're, we're doing it well, we're managing it well, and we want to continue to manage it well.
A couple of the other things that I wanted to highlight on this, on this slide here, I think I'm going to use this pointer well, watch out, Mike, I might zap you. Um, so Doug talked about parents donating time. We've got coaches from all walks of life mentoring these kids. We've got commissioners that are helping guide some of these sports, and we've got some of them here, we've got former commissioners here. John Brunidge had led basketball for several years. I've got a co-commissioner in Jerika who's leading basketball. Doug, standing next to me, is leading, leading baseball. Um, like I said, I create, I, I helped create and guide volleyball. Um, board members, I mentioned that we have a full board. Additional events outside of leagues that we participate in, the parades, you know, Christmas and Fourth of July. Unfortunately, I know we're talking about maybe flexing that or trying to figure out how to flex that Saturday and Sunday. We invest a lot behind the scenes in those parades just to have them canceled. So there's a lot that we do behind the scenes in preparing and getting ready for those, a lot of candy that's bought, a lot of pre-planning that's done, just to have them canceled. Um, it's a little embarrassing when I'm handing out candy canes in May. Um, so that's a joke. Um, the trunk-or-treat event that we had, um, and we plan for many more of these events to build awareness of WAA, and we want to build that partnership and the awareness of the partnership with the town of Waxaw. So these are Doug's slides, so I'm not going to steal his thunder, so I'm going to back away again, I'm going to swig some water so I can stay hydrated for the last couple slides.
So this is more around that question mark of the, the over-usage of the fields, right? I think back in that January twenty-fifth meeting, you were giving some numbers around the field usage hours, well over nine hundred hours, apologies if you can't see it, I know it's tiny, but, um, that, that number kind of blindsided us, uh, and we weren't giving any context into it, so we tried to back end where, where that number came from, and we realized it was from when Park, what we think we realized was from when Parks and Recs Department kind of asked us, hey, we need six months in advance, like what, what your field usage is going to be? And my answer to them is, we don't know, we can't give you that, it's not possible. I don't know how many teams I'm going to have, I don't know the weather on March thirty-first. If you do, I'll tell you if I need the field or not. Uh, we just can't do it, so, but they needed it anyway, so we just blocked everything and gave them a block of just almost morning to night and said, hey, this is what, this is what, if you need it now, this is what we need. Um, and then that made its way to you to tell, to tell you that we're overusing the fields, when in reality, we're not. Nine hundred hours, they're all below six hundred. Uh, the closest on, on a baseball field is close to six hundred, and we think that's even overestimated. These numbers are coming from our scheduling system. Every single practice, every single game is put into schedule works, uh, and then is pushed through Sports Engine to the parents so that it, there's an official record and schedule of, of everything that happens within, within these fields. And so we're going back in the history and pulling that information and seeing how much we're actually utilizing these fields, and you can see, they're well, well below the number that was quoted. Um, so I think a- at best, you were, you were given some incomplete information, at worst, you're just given some wrong information during that meeting, and so we wanted to, to correct it here.
Hopefully you can follow on that grid, hopefully my voice is loud enough, you can follow on that grid where you go from Sunday to Monday, or, I'm sorry, from, uh, Sunday to Saturday, and if you add it across, you get thirty-six hours, multiply that thirty-six hours by twenty-six, twenty-six weeks, I'm sorry, yes.
So if you, if you take Sunday to Saturday, and we just grabbed randomly, we grabbed a rectangle of those hours, add those across, you get thirty-six, multiply that thirty-six by twenty-six weeks, which is half of a year, which is six months, which is what we were asked to provide, and when you multiply that out, you get exactly two, nine hundred and thirty-six, which is exactly the math and exactly the number, which you'll see on a following slide, two slides down, exactly the number that was quoted in the slide that was presented on January twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth. So we wanted to explain to you where that number came from, that is the rectangle block. What is actually used looks more like a shotgun blast into that rectangle, and that's what we're actually using. So Doug, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, so this, this is basically what we wanted to talk about, and to illustrate that we're not, we're not over-utilizing these fields. And again, I, I don't know when the last time you all have been out to those fields, if you go out and look at those fields, those baseball fields are pristine. We've had, uh, external travel teams that come in and look at them and say, these, these are nice fields, I've never played on fields this nice before. Um, and we're continually trying to do things better and more efficiently. This is the first year that we put, um, rye seeding over the winter time so that, and, and they look phenomenal, and they're ready to play on, and we're ready, we're hoping for our opening day this weekend, uh, to play on some fantastic fields, assuming that- And they're ready to play on and we're ready, we're hoping for our opening day this weekend to play on some fantastic fields, assuming that our weather cooperates with us. So the other thing we wanted to talk about is just the history of the overall maintenance of the fields, right? This, we're giving a graph of just how much our field-related expenses are. And as, as the years go on, things get more expensive and more projects are done, and you can see that kind of on the, on the right. On the, on the baseball side, right? What we used to do historically is just get truckload, we would require work bonds for parents when registering. In order to receive that work bond back, we required some volunteer hours, right? We'd get a truckload of dirt and say, alright, you know, the field needs dirt. So we're gonna get truckloads of dirt and we're gonna wheelbarrow it in and we're gonna spread it out, right? And people would sign up to get their work bond back and we'd get an army full of people out there to do some of this work. You know, over the course of time, we realized that wasn't the most efficient thing, right? We, at the end of the day, we are just volunteers, we're dads, we're moms. We think we know what we're doing in terms of maintenance, but we eventually handed it off to a professional company. We brought in Carolina Greens for the baseball field specifically in August of twenty-twenty-three. And we had a fifty-plus thousand dollar field renovation. And again, when those folks walked away, those fields were pristine. And this, we're talking about a professional company that does Texas A&amp;M, did the Baltimore Ravens for their playoff game. They do Tennessee University, right? They're a professional company, but they're actually just based next door over an Indian Trail. And lo and behold, less than one week after that was done in August, the fields flooded. Thankfully, there was no damage. Especially given that we just cut a check for fifty-plus thousand dollars. Come December, obviously, they flooded again. And that one was very significant material damage. We immediately coordinated to get some folks out there once the flooding succeeded. We got folks out there to see like what just happened and we saw the devastation, particularly on Field Four for baseball. Soccer fields generally will survive a flood a lot easier than a baseball field, right? That dirt will get picked up and with that moving water, it get pulled off the field as you probably have either seen it firsthand or seen in the pictures. And we got our folks out there to assess the problem. We got our Carolina Green partner back out there immediately. And asked for, you know, hey, priority service. We got, we got our season starting in February for practices, in March for games. And we need this back up to par. And thankfully, he was able to squeeze us in and they now look great. That was another eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. Keep in mind, we did not ask the town to chip in one penny. We know that's our responsibility. We've been doing it, we plan to do it, and we'll continue to do it. But, you know, we want a good partnership with the town going forward. And we need some help with the flooding because we cannot be dropping twenty thousand dollars every few months. Eventually, we're gonna run out of money and the kids need a place to play. It's only fair for them. But you can tell how much we're putting into the park. And that, that number has been increasing because of the needs of the park and us doing our part to provide those needs and then solve those problems.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Should we take a moment to pause for any questions thus far, or would you like us to keep going through the presentation? We do have a couple of other slides, but I just wanna make sure that you're not loading up a bunch of questions, or you wanna go ahead and go through some of the questions before we go through the rest of the presentation? Would you like us to keep going? Yeah? Okay. Alright, alright, we'll keep, we'll keep going. Okay. And Doug has this next slide as well, so.
There we go. Yeah, so this one is just about the overall field use agreement. We just stole these slides from that January twenty-fifth presentation, right? The upper left and the lower right. And, you know, again, there were several different options that were called out as far as what do we wanna do for the future of Nesbit Park, and one of those being an updated field usage agreement, one of those being the town taking over, which I've already mentioned. Another being that the town just run an in-house athletic program. And then finally selling the fields to WAA, I think was also brought up. What are, what we'd like to just call out is that, again, if you go look at the fields, they are phenomenal. We think things are working well. There are certain things, there's been somewhat of a rocky relationship over the course of, you know, the WAA versus the Parks and Rec department. Part of that is driven by who's responsible for what, right? Irrigation being one of them. We were adamant, we're not responsible for it. Well, they laid out to you in that January twenty-fifth meeting, they are responsible for it. Town is responsible for the irrigation, still hasn't worked. That's why we were out there, morning, evening, and night with hoses trying to water that sod, right? They still don't work. And so that's an expense to the WAA because you're supposed to drag a somewhat damp of a field so that that dirt doesn't just fly up. Well, it's gonna continue to fly up. Every single time we prepare a field, every single day for games, that dirt's gonna fly up. The dirt's gonna go away. And so every other year, every year, whatever it is, we're gonna have to come back in, bring in more dirt. Because we don't have water to water those fields. So what we're saying is, we think we're doing our part, we'd like the town to do their part, we'd like to just continue on in the relationship that we have. I think that that agreement can be updated and cleaned up a lot. But the general, the essence of it, of it being that the WAA is responsible for those playing services that, again, I've said it fifteen times, a hundred times already, they are pristine. And we would like to continue to make them pristine, and we're happy to continue to do that. If we can come to an agreement to renew, renew in some form, whether it be a brand-new agreement or a trimmed-down agreement, because again, I think that the current agreement, as it's written, is a bit messy that can be cleaned up.
To dovetail off of what Doug had mentioned, there have been a couple of times where we've come to visit and talk about the contract. And that was mentioned during the January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth meetings that you had. And that is absolutely true. Some of the things and some of the stopping points have been that we have been told that the irrigation and the well would be repaired and would be back in working order. And it, it just still hasn't been. And if, if you know anything about irrigation, you know that you need to pump that water to the end of the irrigation line and to the sprinkler heads. And if those lines have been dry for so long and they haven't held water, they are going to dry up. And that PVC underground is going to dry up, it's going to dry rot. And when you repressurize it, it's going to crack in various spots. When they were repaired and they were repressurized, there were leaks that were found in various areas. So it was, it was interesting. It was like, you know, watching a movie. You would watch and you would say that we were fixed over there. And then you would look over your left shoulder and you would have leaks there. And, you know, there's only so much bubble gum that you can put on the dam to fix the, or on the dike to fix it. And I had offered during one of the conversations to come in and put new piping and just leave the old. Just leave it buried. Put new piping down and let's get those giant sprinkler heads that they have on golf courses. Let's put those down off of the fields, but we would still be responsible for them. Keep them off of the fields so when we aerate the fields, there's no risk of puncturing them or doing any damage. But they would be able to spray two-thirds of the way across. We would get full coverage, absolute coverage. But we would eliminate the risk of doing damage to them. We would get full coverage of water on the fields. And we would eliminate both of those problems and we could just let those, those old and dilapidated pipes stay where they are. And that was not something that we wanted to move forward with. That offer still stands. We would really be interested in doing that. And even splitting that cost and looking into that. We did have Amanda Thornton and her brother, who couldn't be here tonight. We had asked them to work with the town. They met with some of the people. And they, they were not, they were not called back. But we had brought these professionals that we have, again, in that umbrella of our WAA family. And we had brought those professionals to the table to, to work with everyone and try to do an assessment. And we still want to do that. We still want to bring those kinds of things to the table, so we'd really love to be able to do that.
The last slide really is just around the, what I already kinda touched on, the agreement. I think the last agreement was signed twenty-nineteen. It is a five-year agreement. It expires in the middle of our baseball and soccer seasons at the end of this year. And I've said it a hundred times already, I think things are going well. We would like to continue on and operating as is. And we'd like the town's support to do just that.
Well, let's go ahead and jump to questions then? Folks have questions or?
Go for it.
Does the current agreement that you, that you now have with the town, does that clearly specify the responsibilities of each party?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
And are those specifications something that you are satisfied with currently? Or are you looking to change things within this current agreement?
So there, there are some things that we would like to have slightly modified. One example that I will give to you would be when the, when the town rents the fields, all of the revenue is returned to the fields. We would like to have a better understanding of, or maybe have part of the expense shared or have some kind of understanding of what would happen with, let's say, for example, the light, the light expense. In the, in the agreement, it is stated, and I believe during the, the the presentation on the twenty-fifth, it was stated that that expense, when lights are used, is deducted from the light bill. That is not happening. So we would like that to be upheld in the, in the agreement. So we would like that to be adhered to. We don't say anything about it, but we would like to have that done. I'm the one that actually allocates the expense and goes into the Skylogics program, which pulls down the hours. And I receive the bill. And the bill matches the spreadsheet that we receive. That tells us what we need to have paid. And for the past several years, there has not been a deduction. So either there has never been a rental at night. But we do know that there is a new rental that was just recently signed that is also requiring lights. So maybe that'll be something to come. Maybe lights have never been rented or included in a rental. But I, I don't have that, I don't have that information. But there may be some other things. Doug, I don't know if you have anything else to say?
I mean, I was just kinda clarified that, you know, again, you all know that we are responsible for all the expenses related to the playing services, but when the fields are rented out, the town keeps that money. I don't know in any situation where that really makes sense. We don't want the money. We're not asking for the money. I think the WAA, and this is something that we can discuss, what is the right approach? Should the WAA be responsible for the renting, I use this in quotes, renting out of the fields? Because I'm not looking to rent it out for fifty bucks an hour and make any money. No. It's just, we have the calendar. We have the right of first refusal. We know when it is, but we also have the financial responsibility. So it should be up to us whether this other team utilizes it and not just a revenue-generating thing for the town, which doesn't come back to us. Because if they damage our equipment, that's on us to pay for. If the dirt's, you know, in a bad place when they leave, that's on us to drag and take care of it. Different things like that. I think, I don't know in what world that really makes sense where the town takes that revenue and what we have the responsibility to pay for.
And additionally to that, the other thing that I'd like to have removed from that is the responsibility of the town to fill out a report every time that there is a rental done. That is in there. I really don't think that needs to be in there. I think that is just way too deep to go. If there is something done, if there is some kind of damage done, okay, we can figure that out. But after every single rental, to have that in that agreement, me personally, I think is way too much burden on the town. And I'd like to have that removed. And that's something that Doug and I have talked about. We think that whatever happened, and this predates Doug and myself, whatever happened when that contract was written up, someone took things really, really deep and went way too detailed and was way too excessive with things. So that's a burden that I would like to take off of the town and off of the Parks and Rec Department. Where I just don't feel that that's really necessary after every single rental to have to write up a report and give that to us for the conditions before and after. I just really don't think that's necessary. I think that's just way too much.
So if there's damage to the field after the use of the field and they come out and they find that damage, the town, you don't think that that should be noted in any form of report just so that you are made aware and that the town also has information regarding whatever has transpired? Although, albeit that you may be fixing whatever the damage is, but just to note it so that everybody understands if it is not correctly fixed, what the damage in fact was?
I, I really don't. And the reason why I don't is we have had people that have taken their four-wheelers out and done damage to the fields and we can never trace that back. We've had small groups of men go out and play soccer that just organize themselves that aren't part of a rental that go out. We affectionately called them the Clydesdales because that's the amount of damage that they did. It costs soccer six thousand dollars to have that repaired and they weren't even part of a rental. So we can't really trace any of that stuff. So I just personally feel that it's an extra burden. And to put that on Dina's staff, I think would be a little too much. I'm just trying to make things convenient for everyone, yes.
On the third-party rental, like we have to ask ourselves, what is the purpose of this park, right? Because, yeah, WAA has the right of first refusal, but what about everybody else, right? There's an example of this. There's a cricket, there's a bunch of cricket guys that come out there almost every Saturday and Sunday and they're out there. We're out there literally every weekend, either prepping the fields for games or for practices and that sort of thing. We see them out there all the time. Great group of folks, super nice guys. They always use our field. We don't, we don't necessarily care, right? As long as they don't damage it, we don't care. They do hammer something in, I don't know much about cricket frankly, but they do hammer something into the ground, but it's never been a problem, so we don't, we don't say anything about it. If we do have a practice that's scheduled, we ask them to move, they're super polite. They go and find another field to play on. Should those folks be, have to reserve and pay for that field? I don't know. Is it a public park or is it not, right? If I'm just a dad and my son and I wanna go out and use the field, do I need to reserve it? Do I need to pay for it? I don't, I don't think so. Should I? If I'm just a dad with a bunch of, with my son and a bunch of neighborhood kids, do I need to reserve it? I don't know. I don't think so. If I'm a baseball coach that's not part of WAA and I go out there on a Sunday afternoon, I'm like, hey, kids, I'm just gonna go out there and play some baseball. Do I need to reserve that? The field's open, it's not being used. Do I need to pay for that? I don't, I don't think so. It's a public park. But I think we're, I think we're getting a little excessive on requiring folks to, to rent and pay for these fields. I think we need to ask ourselves, what's the nature and purpose of these parks as well? And that's why I think this whole rental thing should be kind of a topic of discussion of what we should be doing with it.
Okay, you also spoke about the piping that's underground and getting sprinkler heads that are similar to those on golf courses. And that, did I understand you to say it's that something that you would fix or put in place? Or you wanted the town to share the cost of doing that?
What I said was that I wanted to consider splitting that cost because it is a, putting the, putting the piping down outside of the fields is something that per the contract is the responsibility of the town. But my offer, when we sat down during the contract negotiation, just to get through it, so we would just stop with all of these patchwork repairs, was WAA will pick up half of the cost if you just put something brand-new in. Because what they did is they put in a new control box and they repaired the well completely. So it's almost like putting in a new engine, but keeping the same old transmission that keeps failing. So why not go ahead and repair everything and have everything brand-new as opposed to having one component that's new, but you know that the other one is going to fail continuously? Yeah, so that was our offer, yeah.
Was there an estimate for the cost of that presented at the time of your discussion with Parks and Rec? Okay, was there um an estimate for the cost of that presented at the time of your discussion with Parks and Rec?
Uh, there there was not because we didn't get that far, but we did bring out our consultant and they offered to do an assessment. And they were refused to be be taken on board to do that assessment.
If I can, if I can just add some clarity to, like, the the January twenty-fifth meeting, she she presented it to you, irrigation is not our responsibility, right? We're we're willing to be partners and help to get it up and running. But, you know, this is listed in that January twenty-fifth presentation that this started in mid twenty twenty-two. But I think I I call it about August, you know, we're now in March twenty twenty-four and they still do, it does not work. Um, it it's kinda ridiculous. Uh, and the fact that the fields look as good as they do despite that, I I think is a testament to how well we're 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 operating these parks. Um, but again, to be clear, we're not responsible for it, but we're willing to be partners. And we're willing to come to the table if that is what makes sense, because we wanna be partners with the town. Plain it, plain it simple?
I have a question. So you weren't able to get an estimate, but if you had to, if in your experience, what would something like that, cause you're not doing a whole new irrigation system, you're kind of doing an adjacent irrigation system, I guess? So how much would that cost? How much time does it take? When would that happen? I mean, because the season's starting, so can that happen while the season, or is this in the future?
So, yeah, what we would want to do is we would want to do that during during the offseason. Um, only because of the safety issues for the kids. Um, as far as being able to quote anything, I would not have that that skill set to be able to do that. Um, but I I have been in contact with the people that did offer to do something like that. And one other irrigation company, and they are willing to come back and and do something.
Did you have something, Jason?
Hey, guys, um, I think this presentation is long overdue. It's um, it's really good, um, so thank you. Uh, one of the things I, um, I think you touched on, but you didn't really, I I think go over it is um, the partnership with the town, I think is the oldest, is that right? It's all, was it all of the forty-five years you've been a partner with with the town of Waxahaw?
Uh, I I believe that is correct. Um, I know that the um, I know that the organization blended in nineteen eighty-six. Um, I believe that they were independent from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-six. And then it did merge in nineteen eighty-six and became a partner with the town in eighty-six.
With, and and I I think what we we also discovered is it was one of the oldest in Union County as well, which was really, really remarkable. And so, um, I think that this partnership is something to be celebrated. It's um, it it's it's something that's been going on very well for so many years. And um, some of the things you've presented tonight, I I I think as far as the board is is concerned should be relatively easy to to get through. Uh, I know Commissioner McMillan specializes in contract law and so, um, you know, it has to be beneficial for both for both parties and it has to be clear. And if it's overly burdensome, then let's get that fixed. That's pretty straightforward. Um, I'm all in favor of um modifying and extending the um, the uh, the agreement. And um, I'm certainly, I mean, local government isn't a sports management company that that I know. So um, I think relying on someone like yourself is is really beneficial for us. Um, we probably shouldn't be in that that business. I also think that irrigation and aeration should not be a mystery in North Carolina. Um, that's, that's odd to me, but um, uh, so that being said, performing an assessment certainly, certainly makes sense. That's what I have.
First, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who came out and spoke and uh this was an excellent presentation and um, it's, you know, there's something that you get from volunteerism that money really can't buy. You guys really, someone said it earlier, you really are the heart and soul of Waxahaw in that way. Um, I just had a quick question about the uh, the irrigation issue and, you know, the the offer that you made to split the cost. Um, would it be correct to say that's kind of just your way of uh urging or motivating a a better system in the end, like, I mean, it's like paying for an upgrade kind of, right?
Yeah, a- absolutely, yeah. I think the um, you know, the old sprinkler heads, the conventional sprinkler heads that are out there now. Um, are are old, antiquated, and just don't do the job that they that they really should. And the products that are out there now and and are available um are far more advanced. And will do a much better job and and cover a greater area. And I really think that they'll save money in the long run, because we can use less sprinkler heads. And therefore, there'll be less damage to be done when there are less sprinkler heads out there. Uh, so I think in the long run, it'll be must, much more cost-effective as well for everyone involved. And that's the, that's the accountant in me speaking now.
And just one last question, so if the irrigation gets fixed, uh, are you saying that there would be barring torrential rain and all of that? That there would be less loss of dirt? Because the fields will be moist and so you're not losing it to wind and just kids kicking it around?
Yeah, but I think, I think that's, that's accurate. Uh, it it's it's not a science, I can't tell you without water when we would need to do dirt or how often, how more often would we, but we would need to do dirt, but in theory, yes. Uh, we would require less dirt, uh, less often, uh, if we had more more moist dirt that we were dragging through irrigation.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one more.
Please.
In that January meeting, it was also, I believe it was noted that there was um some inability to speak with officers because there had been or was uh a turnover in numbers of people coming and going and who was in office at the time. Um, so how long have you been in office right now?
So I started as the treasurer. Um, I was the treasurer for three years, so I've been part of W A A and part of their board for close to, I think it's been about six years. So I've been, I've been around for quite a while, I think I'm the longest standing person. Um, and I'm always available. Um, I always say that I'm available via text, that's probably the fastest way to get in touch with me. Uh, but that's the, that's the quickest way to get in touch with me. I'm currently the Waxahaw Athletics Association President. Um, so, um, you know, I really like to have things kinda, you know, filter through me. Doug has been around for a while, um, he can tell you a little bit about his background and how long he's been around too.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, I I started with Waxahaw Athletics, so Waxahaw Baseball specifically sometime in twenty fifteen. That is just as a volunteer coach. Um, I believe if I, this is pulling on my memory, but I believe I joined the the baseball, the the operating committee of the baseball board um, in late twenty twenty, I think. Uh, and then they asked me to take over as the the lead baseball commissioner in in uh late twenty twenty-two. Uh, and so I've been in that position ever, ever since despite what my wife would like.
Okay, so it it can be said then that you do have board members who are available and who have been in office. Uh, who have knowledge and information that they can meet with Parks and Rec. And you are available to either update this field agreement um or work through what has to be worked through?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, we we have had some meetings that have been on what I like to call the the shoulders of the days. Um, you know, because we are, we are professionals and we do have our regular jobs. Um, you know, we do prefer to meet at four o'clock. And the negotiation there is, let's meet at four and maybe we go till six. And then that way, there's a little bit of sacrifice on both sides. Um, so that's, that is, you know, kinda what we, what we prefer. Um, we have had, um, you know, an evening meeting. Um, where we've, we've met um after hours or starting at five. Um, so we've done that as well. Um, we've also done phone meetings as well. Uh, but I think the most effective way to meet is when we're face-to-face. Um, you know, in person, live and in person, when you can see expressions on people's faces across the table and crack a joke once in a while. I think is is always the best way to communicate with people.
Thank you.
So, um, what, what type of direction are you needing from us right now? Is, do we need to have Dina come back or do you need help on facilitating the contract? I I'm just wondering what type of direction you're wanting from us at this point? Jeff, you're, were you gonna say something?
Yes, thank, thank you Tracy. Uh, so I just wanna understand, make sure that that I understand that that it feels like the consensus of the board is to to work with them to re renegotiate and renew the contract. Which is in essence, the option one, we discussed.
Discussed during the retreat, yeah.
The retreat, is that, am I hearing that correctly?
So we're saying renegotiate and give an updated field agreement from the twenty nineteen version. And something that can be worked through on both sides? Well.
Yeah.
Yes, as simplified and clarified, getting things.
But it has to be also um specific to the duties and responsibilities of each party. So it can be simple, but it has to be specific. Because unless both parties fully understand what they are both responsible for, then you'll be right back here at the same place again.
Completely agree. I I think going back to that Jan- January twenty-fifth meeting, you were laid out with four options. I think the only two realistic options are option one, which is the continued negotiation or continued use agreement or or option four. And I don't really view that, and that was the sale of the fields to the W A A, but I don't necessarily view that as a realistic option, given that how much we'd be willing to pay for fields that flood very consistently. My, my understanding, I was told this was a hundred-year flood plan and I've counted at least seven or eight floods in the last four or five years. So we, we, we've just spent seventy-plus thousand dollars just on baseball fields alone as a result of those floods.
Okay, so I would think that they would need to renegotiate and update the agreement.
Yeah.
With specific um duties and responsibilities of each party.
Yeah, and and Ms. McMillan, I I agree with you. I think that um what we need is, um, I would also add the word clear.
Clear and specific.
Clear, clear, yeah, and and, um, you know, let's not get, uh, you know, down that rabbit hole to where, you know, specific becomes over-detailed.
But necessary.
Um, yes, exactly, yeah, necessary and clear, yes, exactly. Um, you know, because we, we do need to make sure that we establish those lines. And we need to make sure that it is very clear at that point in time. And we need to make sure that the people that come after us understand that as well. Um, because we're not just writing this for ourselves, we're writing this for the people that come after us. Uh, because we may not be here, I may not be here next week. Uh, Doug may not be here next week. Uh, we need to make sure that it's clear, hopefully, well, not next week, that's a bad, that's a bad analogy. Um, or a bad example. Uh, we won't get this written in a week, but um, we need to make sure that it's clear for the people to come after us.
I do have one more question for the board, if if you would be supportive of me uh getting an appraisal for the for the ballfield area, just so we do understand what they are valued at.
An appraisal for the ball, for the entire field itself, the cost of for sale purp- yeah, for irrigate, yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand.
For for uh sale purposes.
Okay, and so if we're getting the appraisal for the sale purposes, would we then be getting an appraisal also for the irrigation purposes as well? To have both sets?
The the cost estimate to fix that.
Right, so that you have all of that in place at the time of conversation, so that you have numbers in front of you to discuss.
We can get an estimate for that, yes. And I think with that estimate, needs to be a complete and total understanding of everything that needs to be fixed, external of the fields and internal of the fields. Cause the contract's very specific about external and internal, to your point, the playing surface. So we need to make sure we understand what's needed on both sides.
Yeah, and if we, if we were to do anything like that with regard to purchase of fields. We would absolutely want to have everything taken care of that is outside of the fields repaired. Before we would consider sitting down and talking about purchasing the fields themselves. Because we wouldn't want to purchase anything on the fields, knowing that whatever is outside the fields is not operational. That would be in control of anything on the fields, if that, if that makes sense.
Wouldn't there also be an issue of, uh, you know, the wandering cricket players and Clydesdales? I mean, they might, uh, you know, if you guys owned the land, you probably would wanna try and put a stop to that, right?
Uh, yes and no. Cricket players, no. Dad, dads with their kids, no. Uh, I, you know, dogs on the field, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I don't, I don't want dogs on the field. I don't, I don't want people playing golf on the field and things like that, creating divots. But the cricket players, I don't have a problem with, I think they're fine. I don't, I don't, personally, right? You guys gotta ask yourselves what the purpose of these parks are for. I don't think they should be paying, it's a public park as of right now. You know, if if we owned it, yeah, surely it wouldn't be public, but would I charge a a local cricket guys that wanna come out there every week? No, right? I mean, I I don't, I don't care to raise fifty bucks for them to play for a couple hours, right? I I'd rather them just go have fun for a couple hours and play cricket.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I had one question. When you get the estimate for the irrigation, are you getting a total repair or are you getting an estimate of what Todd suggested?
I would suggest we get a estimate of the total repair of the entire system, whatever that entails. I'm not a, I'm not an irrigation expert, but we will find people that are and see what that entails.
And it it needs to be a a total repair with an understanding of inside the field and outside the field.
itemization.
Cause the contract's very specific about inside and outside the field.
Okay, well, that was a really good discussion. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your time. Sorry that took so long. I was hoping it wouldn't, but I'm glad we did it, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone, really appreciate it.
Okay, speed things up a little. All right, we'll move on to old business. Um, I believe we have Lisa Thompson to discuss an item that we will be voting on this evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor. My name's Lisa Thompson, I'm the Planning Director for the Town of Waxahaw. I'm here tonight to present a text amendment to the Land Development Code, it's chapters four and thirteen. It's establishing distance requirements for smoke and tobacco shops. Um, at the last meeting at the public hearing, I went into detail, so I'm gonna go a little bit quicker. Um, please stop me if you guys have any questions. Um, like I mentioned, the state prohibits um us from adopting regulations regarding the sale or promotion of tobacco products. However, we do have the authority to regulate the location through zoning. Um, up on your screen is a cut sheet from our permitted use table. Um, and P, the letter P represents, it's a permitted use by right. So we currently have smoke and tobacco shops in our table. We allow it in M S, T C, N C, and C C. Staff is looking to remove it from N C, so we crossed it out. Um, because of its proximity to residential. And then we're also looking to add supplemental um requirements or special requirements, that's the S R. Um, those are preemptive requirements, it's by right, but it triggers us to go check out those uh special requirements. And then we're also looking to um add a definition. Here's the map I presented at the last meeting. Everything um in color is um a commercial-type zoning district. So you have Providence Road running north and south in red and pink, seventy-five running east and west. Um, the current vape shops are highlighted in a, with a black circle. That's a thousand-foot buffer from each vape shop. Um, you see, we have three currently downtown, one in the uh Food Lion Shopping Center. And then the um red circles are a thousand feet from any school and then green is a thousand feet from any public park. So those special requirements we're looking to add is that any vape shop be a thousand feet from each other. That um they be a thousand feet from a school or a park. And then we're looking to add the definition to include vape-type products, T H C. Um, your kratom and the electronic delivery of um those products. And then I also wanna point out, it's the primary sale, so we're not looking to regulate grocery store, stores or gas stations and their sale of tobacco product, it's the primary sale and distribution of um A through B. Planning Board considered the text amendment on February twentieth. They unanimously recommended approval. And tonight, we're looking for a motion to adopt the text. And then I have the Land Use Plan Consistency Statement there for you guys to read out loud if you, um, agree with that language. Be happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion to adopt this amendment petition TA one-three-two-zero-twenty-four as law, as well as the Land Use Consistency Statement?
Motion to adopt text amendment petition TA thirteen-two-zero-twenty-four and the Land Use Plan Consistency Statement as follows. Land Use Plan Consistency Statement, text amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals for the Town of Waxahaw, and is reasonable and in the public interest in effort to reduce tobacco and hemp activity with the U.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is so passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have James Kelly to give us a update on the Waxahaw Master Transp- yeah, Waxahaw Master Transportation Plan. Say that five times fast. While chewing gum.
Well, good evening. Tonight, I'll be giving a brief update on our Waxahaw Master Transportation Plan, um, as well as providing some navigation to our resources available on the town website. So to start, just wanted to recap to where we are, where we've been. So this, our community engagement for the, our master transportation plan for the town began on February twenty-ninth, and it goes through April first. So there's still time to respond if you haven't responded already. Um, we've also have held two workshops here at the Waxahaw Police Department, one on February twenty-ninth and one on March seventh. Looking forward, we have one workshop on March twenty-first that is available in the afternoon from one-thirty to three o'clock. And then finally, the fourth and final workshop on March twenty-eighth from eight o'clock to nine-thirty in the morning. So the main purpose of these workshops is to educate the community about the WMTP process and the challenges and constraints that are inherent to the overall transportation planning process. Input received will help establish our local transportation priorities, and will better relay the community's preference, um, for additional funding options. Note that these workshops, you don't have to stay the whole time. They're drop-in workshops. So you can arrive at any point during those, those blocks. Um, and each workshop will contain the same content. So if you miss one, you can always come to another, as long as you come to one, it's helpful. And if not, if you don't wanna come to one, that's fine too. There, our resources are available on the, on our town website. Um, just wanna stress the importance of the, taking the MetroQuest survey, because if you don't submit your response to the actual online survey, it is not recorded. So make sure that you do submit to that online survey whatever your preferences are, and we'll walk through those here momentarily. Again, that.
It's not valid till you hit the submit button.
Exactly, exactly. So we still have about two more weeks before that, uh, opportunity closes. Here is the QR code, and I'm gonna pause here and I'm gonna switch over to our town, uh, website to provide a brief overview and navigation to where those resources are, where you can find them, as well as a brief overview on our current funded and unfunded projects map, funding options, poster overview, as well as provide a, uh, walkthrough. So let's see if I can switch over to that. So to navigate, um, for those that are unaware, all you have to do is go to the town page at waxahaw.com. So I'm just gonna go ahead and do that now. And there's a multitude of ways to get to this. Um, if you scroll down right here in our spotlight, it will take you to the direct link to the landing page that has all of the information. Now, I will note, if you're on a mobile device, sometimes this can be finicky. So another way to get to that is to go up here to I Want to Learn About, and then you would just scroll down to I Want to Learn About the Waxahaw Master Transportation Plan, and you can click that. If not, there's an easy link to the spotlight page right there. Now, this spotlight page will take you to a landing page with an overview of what the Waxahaw Master Transportation Plan is, as well as the previous version that was adopted in two-zero-twenty. Going through some of these links here, here's the approved Waxahaw Master Transportation Plan that was adopted in two-zero-twenty, so we're updating that plan. The first link here will take you to a map of funded and unfunded projects. Now, that map shows both projects in blue and red. The blue, the seven blue projects are the projects that we want you to prioritize, to comment on. Um, the red projects are those that are currently funded, uh, throughout the town, so such as NC sixteen and its program for two-zero-twenty-nine, as well as several other projects throughout the town limits as well. You're free to comment on those, as you'll see here momentarily too. Another link to reference is this Funding Options poster. So if you click on that, that will provide you an overview of the various funding options that the town currently uses, such as STIP funding, POW bill, grant funding, and TIA ordinance, uh, with incoming developments. Um, some other options there to explore are the Transportation Reserve Fund. You'll note that there's pros and cons to ea- each option. So while the Transportation Reserve Fund does provide financial stability, it does take a long time to accumulate those funds to ultimately fund a multimillion-dollar project. Some other things to note, as far as a potential for a Waxahaw transportation bond, our focus would be on road infrastructure. So road infrastructure as far as existing roads, existing structure, as well as new roads and new connections, new bridges, and that sort of thing, as well as making sure that with those new roads and improving our existing infrastructure, that we also include that pedestrian focus, um, and provide that pedestrian connectivity. Finally, we're also asking, um, our community to respond on a program that's called Pennies for Progress. Note that this was originally established in York County, South Carolina. Uh, Pennies for Progress is essentially a program that, well, for North Carolina, that is, is a quarter-cent sales stack. So to put that into perspective, if you were to spend up about a hundred dollars at the grocery store, that equates to about a quarter, uh, that would go towards this program. Note that Union County is not currently advocating for this program, so support would have to be achieved to obtain it. Um, the key thing here is that if this program were used, Union County could raise approximately six million dollars annually to support transportation infrastructure as well as other defined uses. So now, let's give just a brief overview of the survey. And if you're here and you haven't taken the survey, we do have laptops in the back, so you're more than welcome to respond to that survey here, or take it at home, or stop by at our, one of our workshops. So brief overview, the, the survey is broken down into five main parts. The first part is a welcome page, a landing page, that gives you the overview of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and some more information of when those public workshops are being held. The second one provides the user with a lot of freedom per se, as far as here's a map, and you can zoom in to any point along that map. Note that these blue lines are those, um, unfunded projects that we are asking you to provide comment on, as well as other areas throughout the town limits. So you can zoom in, essentially you can zoom into a particular intersection, say, hey, I don't like, I don't like what's going on, the congestion that's happening downtown sixteen and seventy-five, and you can comment on that. So that, there's mul- there's different projects in here where you can just click and drag and say, hey, yeah, I think this is a useful project. Or maybe you don't like the project, so you can always come in here and say, no, I don't like that. And then there's ultimately the option to, if you don't like or don't see something on the map, you can always, um, add this to improve this area as well, and provide that comment. So there's different options for that. Now, focusing in on the third piece is actually talking and looking at the seven projects. So the seven unfunded projects subject to prior utilization include the Waxahaw Marvin Corridor, and you can see a brief description on that. If you're unable to see it on your device, there's also an enlarge feature that allows you to enlarge and zoom in. So to make that more clear. Also, um, some intersection improvements to Waxahaw Marvin and Gray Byram, as well as Waxahaw Parkway East, which would provide a road extension to bypass the town and help alleviate some of the congestion in our downtown area. Lawson Drive, Cutherson Traffic Signal, so a traffic signal being proposed at the Lawson entrance, as well as at the Millbridge Kensington entrance. So these two locations, even though they're state-maintained roads, we reached out to NCDOT, and warrants are met. So if there's enough public support for these, we could potentially fund these. NCDOT will not provide any funds towards the project. With that said, they have given us the authority to proceed with the project, assuming that we can have the funding, uh, allocated. Some other proj- the last two are Helm's Road Extension, so same thing similar to Waxahaw Parkway East, except on the west side, and, um, Waxahaw Marvin Kensington Intersection. So with this, we're asking you to list your top five in order of preference. So top one, top two, top three, et cetera. Finally, uh, the fourth part of this survey is asking about the various funding options with that poster that we talked about previous. Number one, we just wanna ask you straight out of the gate, do these two acronyms mean anything to you? CRTPO, as well as NCDOT? How, how are you familiar with their processes, as well as their, uh, funding options? And then we ask essentially yea or nay questions as far as, would you support, uh, bonds? Would you consider Transportation Reserve Account and county funding options? Note that we're being very clear that a bond is considered a tax increase, um, and we provide brief descri- brief descriptions on each of those. Now, we do have some preliminary data. Um, I'm not gonna make conclusions off of the preliminary data because we still have two more weeks to go, so, um, but we have received three hundred-plus responses so far to the survey. With that said, only nineteen people have shown up to the workshops. So I would like to see a lot more people show up to the workshops, engage with, um, the town staff, as well as ask us, um, inquiring questions as far as being able to help guide people through the process and answering any, um, questions that they may have. Finally, we ask you some final questions, completely optional, some demographic information. If you don't wanna do that, that's perfectly fine. Just hit that finish button, and your responses are recorded. Going back to the presentation, that's, that's the quick summary. So as far as board actions and questions, um, at this current point in time, no requested action is, um, is required at this time. Staff will continue compiling the community input through April first, and then we'll be looking to come back and present that initial MetroQuest survey results in the month of April to ultimately move toward updating our Waxahaw Master Transportation Plan. As far as future timeline, based on these survey results, we are currently projecting, um, a BOC adoption of that revised, um, WMTP in June or July. And this is important because if we can get that adopted in that timeframe, then that sets us up for grant summits this fall. So with that, I will take any questions.
My only question is, can people please participate? Uh, there's not many people in the room here, of course, but, uh, for everyone online, watching on YouTube everywhere, we, we cannot urge you enough to participate in these types of activities. It's very valuable information, and it enables us to make easier decisions, in all honesty, if we know it has the backing of the people. So please participate. Come to the sessions. Uh, through the retreat, we agreed on four different sessions scattered throughout the day. So people would hopefully be able to make some of those times. But if you can't, definitely go online, and don't forget to hit the finish button. Without the finish button, your results don't count. So please participate. Let's hear what you got to say.
I just wanna take, uh, note of the staff and thank them very much for taking the suggestions that we've made at the retreat, and the maps are great, they're enlarged, they're not blurry, everybody, so come down to the, to the sessions. There's landmarks for those that might not understand exactly where these are happening. Um, and the staff is very knowledgeable, and they can answer the questions that I cannot. So please come down, engage with the staff. They've done a great job, and they're here. Um, and the sessions are scattered. There were two evening sessions, there's a morning, and there's an afternoon, I believe. And so please come out and just take a look and, and ask the questions that you have. Take the survey, please.
Speaking of the survey, I did receive some feedback about people finding it difficult to find the link on the website. And, uh, I know, you know, if you're technically minded, you might think, oh, it's easy, you just, you know, go here. But, um, I wonder if we could look into maybe having a bar at the top for, you know, things that are, uh, current, you know, so that it's blindingly obvious to people where they should click.
Sure. It's, it becomes an action item with a due date that makes it, I don't know, something like that.
Right, 'cause right now, um, what we do have on the town webpage is that spotlight feature. So I'll, I'll reach back out to our communications team to see if that can be better highlighted. Um, but that, that is currently the feature being used, where you can click and go directly to the landing page, tell you everything about it. Um, we'll go back to see if there's anything that communications can update to make that more visible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All righty. All righty. Next item, we have Ms. Barbie Bruce to give us an update. Thank you. Ms. Barbie Bruce is gonna give us an update about some of the rules and procedures. Uh, this will just be a presentation and a discussion.
Thank you. Um, in an effort to keep the procedures, um, in line with the board and the state statutes, it's necessary from time to time to update your, um, rules or procedure. In your packet, you have the latest version of the rules or procedure, and, um, they are redlined with suggestions of re- uh, revisions that the clerk's office is recommending. Um, part of that is, we've updated or recommend that we include the current, uh, town seal, that's the registered trademark for the town. We also have, um, included a suggestion of putting a footer at, on the pages when the board adopts, um, the new rules or procedures, so that we're always have the, the most current, um, uh, procedures that, that you're operating by. We also are recommending that, um, Part Three, which is your meeting times, to update those based on how the board is practicing today. Uh, one of those is to, uh, remove one of the, uh, public comments, which is, um, the latter part of the meetings. Um, and also, and change the, uh, the name of, for the leadership reports. I think currently now it's, it lists the, uh, the board, town manager, uh, report. So we're suggesting going with the leadership reports based on how we're operating today on the agendas. And then we are also recommending that we add an appendix C, which includes all the amendments that the board, um, adopts. So you would have a ru- running tally of all those amendments that you have on a separate sheet, and the date in which they're incorporated. Um, theoretically, what happens when you adopt language or change language in your rules or proce- procedures, the town, uh, the town clerk incorporates that within the process of those procedures, and then those are, are updated for next time, so that we keep a ta- uh, uh, keep in, in close, uh, continuity of how you're operating. And also the, uh, revisions to the table of contents, which identifies, uh, where these rules are laid and outlined, and those are, have been updated based on the suggested revisions. Other than that, I'll turn the rest of it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Barbie. I appreciate that. And then just an update, uh, following the retreat, which seems like forever ago, but it was just a month and a half ago. Uh, so we were, uh, preparing to move forward with the, uh, the next two-by-two agenda in March, and I, I mentioned to Charlie the results of our, um, our retreat, and how we agreed to move forward with the, the two-by-tos, and mentioned that, that part of that, that, uh, consensus agreement was to record those, those meetings. And, uh, our attorney very quickly, uh, advised that we not do that. And so, um, that is why I need to bring this back forward to the board and, and re-talk through that to determine the path forward for us, based on our attorney's advice not to do that. So that was what was agreed to. And so I don't want to move something forward that we're not able to do based on what we talked about at the retreat. So we just need direction on how to. So we just need direction on how to continue to provide, uh, the board information and keep moving business forward.
So I think the goal that we talked about was then to convert to maybe work sessions, utilizing one of the board meetings, uh, one of the Tuesday meetings as a work session where no decisions are voted on or finalized, but topics, new topics are discussed along with a few other agenda items. But then the second board meeting would then be the more typical board meeting where things are voted on and officially entered into record.
I think that's certainly one, one option. Um, I'm sure there are others too.
Yep.
Uh, that is a, a typical way, um, of doing things. Um, but there are others as well.
Yes, I, I don't recall that being a goal from the retreat.
It was discussed, but I think it was settled on the recording.
Right.
What we all agreed on was transparency. So, you know, whether it's recording two by twos or doing it this other way, it's just different ways of being transparent is the way I look at it.
I mean, we've, I've gone to one two by two, but that two by two, for me, was two and a half hours. If we're doing that three times, that's a lot of time the staff is spending. Um, and I don't get the benefit of hearing the rest of the board. Uh, I know at the retreat, Tracy, you made a couple of points that wouldn't have occurred to me. And it wouldn't have been probably told to me from staff because it may have been a one-off or they may have not have realized it. And it could have influenced my way of thinking. And I just think that collaboration is so important, uh, when we're making these big decisions. And, um, I think it's really an efficient way to do it. And we could do it as efficiently as we do a meeting. So I don't think it should take any more time than a regular meeting. If we come, we have the agenda, we come with questions. Really not necessary for the staff to do an entire presentation, um, unless it's a huge item that we need more clarification on. But if we come with the questions, like, you know, we did for the two by twos, it should go fairly quickly. How does staff feel about the two by twos?
I think your staff, uh, generally, as we shared at the retreat, finds value in them. Um, it's, as we talked about, it's their space to be able to bring things to the board and get feedback from the board. And then, you know, it works both ways, obviously, with that. Uh, gives the board the opportunity to, uh, hear things that the staff brings forward. Uh, all of these ideas, as we've talked about, or proposals. Uh, some of them, uh, are very well-developed, others are not very well-developed. And it gives us that ability and space to talk about those things in that venue. So I, we've, we've talked about it, um, multiple times. I think that, that staff obviously is going to move forward in whatever way that the board chooses to move forward. We will adapt.
Overall, they are comfortable with the two by twos? And has there been a problem with the time in doing the two by twos with staff?
No.
I guess my question would be, what would the, the opposition be to doing a work session where we could all be in this, in one room getting the information, the same information?
Is a work session in lieu of the meeting?
Yes.
The two by twos, yeah.
So then you're losing a meeting per month.
Okay.
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily, cuz you're not doing... So when this idea was discussed in a little bit more detail, Jeff and I worked out different types of agendas that would be on a work session meeting versus a, um, more typical meeting. And the idea being that the fairly quick items, the easy items, the stuff that we know doesn't involve much discussion, that could be part of a work session meeting if we know it's gonna go fairly quickly. And then the bigger, more extensive presentation type items, the long detailed new business that needs a detailed presentation. For instance, traffic stuff is something you always wanna get into the weeds on that. So that might be on the more typical, more typical board meeting. So the goal and the overall objective is to tune both meetings such that they're about a two-hour meeting and that the agenda is tailored to accommodate the complexity of whatever's being presented.
But you're losing a meeting because one meeting is specifically for work session items, but not items coming to the board. We have two meetings per month now that come to the board. So we would then have one meeting. The other meeting is what we would do in a two by two. It is not specifically geared towards items that may be coming to the board or coming from the planning board to the board or things that have to be voted on. So you are losing a specific meeting per month.
I don't think you have to because an example would have been, uh, the tobacco ordinance, for instance, on the vape shops tonight. That was a fairly simple presentation, it went very quickly. There was no need for further discussion cuz it had already been discussed and we could easily quickly vote on it the way we did this evening. So it's items like that that I foresee putting in a quote-unquote work session meeting that would accompany the work session item. So you would have the quick and easy items.
Is it a work session meeting or is it a work session? So there's a difference between the meeting and the work session. So a work session would be similar to discussing things that are coming to the board or discussing things that they are working on, um, than with an overall, like with, um, Lisa's presentation that we would have to make a motion and vote on. So are you saying we are meeting just to go over planning ideas or we are meeting for ideas that may in fact be part of a board meeting?
So if you're suggesting that a work meeting is structurally different from a board meeting, then I would basically look to keep a tailored-down agenda of a board meeting that would precede a work session. Such that if you had board meeting items that you can get through in fifteen minutes, a half an hour, you can do those and then transition then into a work session where we start discussing what'll be at the next couple of board meetings.
So you're gonna do a work session and then a board meeting on the same day? And then do a regular board meeting the next meeting without the work session?
Correct.
Are you doing two?
Correct, no, there'd just be the one, the goal would be to do one work session a month and then a tailored-down, with it, a tailored-down board meeting and then a more conventional board meeting on the second meeting of the month.
So I have a lot to say here, I'm sorry. So Brendan and I have been here for six years. We've done both the work session and the two by two type of meetings. Um, y'all have done it once and so I'm just gonna give you some background kind of perspective on how it's helped in the past. So for instance, on the vape one that you just discussed, you and I were in there and we were the third group and I brought up something about the cigar, um, cigar company. And that was something that hadn't been thought of before. So then that gave Ashley and Lisa opportunity to go back and research that more before bringing that to the board as, in a, in a presentation. So had they brought that up in the work session, then that would have just pushed that back further when they could actually go out and get their research and bring it back to us. Now, other things have happened in two by twos where, um, planning would bring us, say, a developer project. Um, I'm gonna give you an instance, Adalina was, was something else prior, it was Crescendo, I think. And when that was presented to us at a two by two, there was a lot of pushback from the board members, so much so that the developer went back to the drawing board and completely renamed the project. And so had, we had only heard about that in a work session in front of the public, that would have created a massive amount of dissent among the public, I'm sure. Um, and it would have required the developer, the planning department, to go through a whole lot of work for something that, when it had come to us, we would have turned down in the first place. So it's actually less work for them to hear what we're thinking before it actually is presented to the public. Um, and I, I sit there and I think about, I mean, I, I know y'all are talking about transparency, but there's so much work that goes behind the scenes of all elected officials. The county level, the state level, the federal level, where our elected officials are discussing with staff, they're meeting with other, you know, representatives, senators, and they work together and collaborate before they write a bill or before they, um, you know, they try to get others to get on board with the bill they're trying to pass. And we don't have full transparency. The public is not sitting there and involved in every single one of these conversations. I mean, this is part of government. This is why we are elected to do the work because the people, they don't have time to sit in on all these conversations that we have, you know, to try to bring something to the board to actually be voted on. And so that is why I believe that the two by two is, is much more helpful than, than this work session.
Thank you. Um, in case you're not sure, Matt Hubert, Assistant Town Manager and, um, Director of Engineering. I think, uh, one, I wanted to be able to provide the, uh, the staff's perspective again. I was on vacation when this became an agenda item and I wasn't able to get a presentation together in time. So, uh, I'll just kind of try and be as, as focused as I can. I, I think we're a lot closer than, than it feels like in this, but if I can provide a little bit of, um, perspective and maybe change kind of the way we're, we're addressing it. Um, first and foremost, you know, it, it's not necessarily about the two by twos themselves, right? Two by twos were a, a solution to a prior administrative problem. This is a different, this is a different thing, different group. You're coming in new, it, it's gonna take a little while for all of us to kind of get used to this. But, um, specifically, it's really about how can we have an opportunity for, for better focus to foster a, a kind of real, um, dynamicism between what the staff has, what the board has and, and truly what the public wants and needs. Um, specifically, you know, our, the staff really feel like it is not a waste of our time. It's, it's super productive because we can, in real time, provide this information, get feedback, see expressions, see real, really where you are and, and, and get a feel for, um, in, in a way that doesn't occur in, in this kind of format with the lights on and the cameras on. Um, and we can take that back and really run with it and then come back with something that's much more tailored to the, the situation instead of, hey, we, we exchanged some information, you asked some questions, if we're off the mark, we gotta come back. We just go through this cycle of, of, of continuing and never really get as perfect as I think what occurs through the two by twos. And again, it's not necessarily about the two by twos. It's, you know, all the concerns that they, they have provided that it, it, it's a great, safe place for exchange of ideas. Just very spitball-y, don't have to feel like you know everything or that you have to, uh, explain or defend anything. It's just, hey, let's get together and talk where we're at from our perspectives and experience. Um, to be able to challenge ideas back and forth and, and feel comfortable doing so. Um, again, you have a position of authority. We have a position where we're, we're kind of stuck between the public and the board a lot of times and that's, that's difficult, doesn't give us a lot of room to maneuver, um, for sure. Again, getting to know you and build relationships with you all, we, we get such limited time. And, and if it's just agenda item this and business that, th- there's a lot lost in translation. And, and so what we can do, whether it's a two by two, how we can actually get that and still be transparent with the public, um, i- is really what, what I'm, I'm looking for. And I think that, that the staff would, would, would get behind and be able to, to really and, and continue our efficiency. Um, because at a certain degree, we, we are a business, right? And, and, and what business would only do business in that, in that way? In a very transactional, stiff way? We, we're not gonna be able to compete and stay on top of things, stay in front, stay, stay flexible with, with the changes, the changing dynamics, for sure. Um, I think for us and me, it, it, the questions are, what do you want? And what do you not want in how we communicate? Um, it's how can I and the team help co-create something similar to the two by twos but still, still provide that transparency or comfort level that we are being on the up and up? Um, and then what other tools in the communication toolbox can we consider to utilize outside of public meetings to facilitate pound, town business? I think a really good example of situations with the W A A, right? When we proposed some, some, um, retreat options, they certainly listened, right? They listened and they came and, and they presented. We cannot begin to try and really tackle that subject. We're dealing with volunteers, right? And, and thank goodness for them. We're dealing with the kids, right? We can't, administratively, we're not gonna win any, any favor in making solid points of business that affect our operational budget when we're talking about volunteers and, and what's for the kids. But the bottom line is money is getting spent and we have to account for it and it's coming out of parks and our budget. They're very worried about that, right? They have to prove that they're doing the right thing by the town, by the W A A. And that's not a subject that is going to be ver- very well-translated to a public meeting. It's just not. I think that's really where I'm coming from and from, you know, a place of, of let's answer the questions of what we're trying to shoot for and not focus too much on two by two. Um, that's, that's, that's really where I'm hoping to, to try and bring us all together.
Speaking for myself, if there's something that staff wants to talk about, you know, I'm more than happy, I'm very available, um, you know, through Jeff or, you know, however you guys wanna do it. Doesn't have to be in a formal two by two meeting. Um, and I get what you guys are saying about that. But, and, you know, I of course appreciate the staff, I know, want them to be happy. Um, but on the other hand, uh, for me, transparency outweighs that because the residents of this town are really, who are ultimately serving.
Is the information that we discuss in a two by two made public? Do you not, do you post that information online?
We, we will, as we agreed to at the retreat, when we move forward, if that's how we do, then yes.
The information would be posted?
Prior to that, we, we did not.
Okay.
Until it moved forward to board business.
But it can be posted?
Yes.
And that's not a problem with the town attorney to post whatever is discussed in that two by two? Okay.
He did, yeah, he, he did not have any issue with that, but when I said we're gonna record it, he said, oh, hold up, you know?
Okay, so if the information is posted with what is discussed or is present at each two by two, that is giving information as to what has transpired at those meetings?
Uh, would they, how we've done it in the past is we've had outcomes. You know, three or four sentences of what...
Based upon what items were discussed?
Yes.
Yes.
May I just say that, that's great? I don't think the public will be happy with that because they don't know where to find it. They can't find the transportation survey, the traffic survey. And so we need to then make an effort to make it as in-your-face as possible. Is there a reason they can't be recorded? What, what would be the reason behind that?
Only because these are staff meetings and the law is quite clear that the meetings of staff are not subject to open meetings laws. This is a staff meeting, a staff time to interrelate with the board members without the board members being put in jeopardy of them violating the open meetings law.
Right.
So it's to avoid the board members from, well, to avoid your being in violation of.
Right.
But it's still a staff meeting.
Correct.
And so because it's a staff meeting, then you, you can't put a chilling effect on staff discussions as, as, uh, was just brought out. That, that this whole purpose of this is this relationship between the board members and the staff and developing where you're wanting to go with certain items that will ultimately appear on the agenda or may never appear on the agenda.
So I guess my question would be, we just had a retreat, I think that went great. And, and I think the staff, I, I think the staff was happy from what I, I've heard. Um, I think everyone was respectful. I think we had great conversations. How would that? I just feel, you know, I've been in the business world, been in the teaching world, and things get done when people work together, they're present together. We just said, isn't it great if we can look at each other and have a conversation? I think we're more alike than we are different. And I think that, you know, I haven't been on the board very long and so for those that have, may have insight that I don't have. And I, I did not hear, um, from Tracy's two by two, that vape shop discussion. That didn't even come to me. It would not have occurred to me. And that's something, that's a learning experience I missed. You know, so I think we can learn from each other, new and seasoned. And I think the workshop, the work, um, session is a great way to do it. If it doesn't work, then we could revisit it, but I don't know. And I, I don't thi- I would not expect the staff to have everything ironed out before they came to me. If I was expected to do that in a classroom, it would not go well. Because things I planned out in my head, you know, you can't really prepare for what a six-year-old's gonna say. So, I, I don't expect, I don't expect the staff to have everything ironed out. I don't think any of us do. I, I think we can have a respectful conversation and say, hey, you know, I'm confused about that. Or if it's something that's more sensitive, like the W A A and you feel like that has to be done separately, we can, we can do that. But, you know, I think a work session would be the best way to go, in my opinion.
I think, um, content is context. Context is king. And, um, and Charlie just touched on it. These are staff meetings. They're not commissioner meetings. That's why they're not recorded. There's, um, there's value, I find value, um, in hearing the staff opinions in a, in a casual environment. That's, I find them to be useful and informative. You wouldn't get that necessarily in a, um, a rather structured, a rather structured environment. And I prefer to be an informed commissioner. So, uh, the, it's helpful for me to hear, hear about this, these things and then act on them or visit a property if it's being potentially suggested to be either annexed or rezoned. And, and to get the opinions from the staff, um, in a non-threatening, uh, environment is, is, is invaluable. It's been said before, uh, Blair has so many, um, credentials, I mean, he's, he's a professional. So what he says, uh, means a lot. And, um, he's a rather funny guy in close, uh, in a, in a non-formal situation. Some of the ideas that come to us aren't, aren't fully baked. Some of these, uh, developer ideas or project ideas that Tracy had mentioned. And, um, that project owner might not want that to be, to be public yet. That's to be expected in this role in government. There are some things that we need to be able to think about, um, before it's, uh, before it's brought to the, brought to the public. And so, um, I know it's, it, it keeps saying, it, it, it keeps getting said, well, you know, more transparency. And we're not representing the people and I'm, I'm just wondering what, what people? There's, uh, uh, are, are you talking about the 2,000 people in your social media group that voted for you? Which is pretty good, I mean, but-
No, not really, Jason. I think it's just a matter of us being out there and listening to people saying that they don't know what goes on behind closed doors. And I think it would have been beneficial to the board during that crescendo-
See, because we don't hear that.
But let me just finish. To, to hear that you guys were going to bat for them. Because they didn't hear that. So what they saw was an approval. But they didn't hear you guys saying, no, that's not a great idea. No, you should do it this way. This is not great for our town. They didn't hear any of that.
There's a lot that goes on in these two by twos. You've attended one.
I've attended one.
There's a lot that goes on.
But as a resident, I felt like I didn't know what was going on.
It changes the scope of, of these projects altogether.
But nobody knows that. And that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying you're not being transparent. It's the perception of transparency.
The perception of transparency. So, the three of you going to dinner tonight after a closed session, is there, what's the perception of transparency there?
I didn't follow you.
Happen to go the same direction. I mean-
All right, now we're devolving into an area that we don't need to speak. I think at this point, there seems to be a fairly strong opinion that we stick with the two by twos, both from a large portion of the board as well as the staff. I certainly respect the staff's opinion. Thank you, Matt. I mean, it's awesome perspective that you've given us tonight. I think from a transparency perspective, I think moving forward, what we can do immediately is publish the outcome of those meetings and just publish some kind of list that talks about what was discussed and what was presented. Because again, from a transparency perspective, um, Jason, one of the big things that, that people get upset about is that by the time public comment comes around, you're neck deep in these projects. And I think that the sooner the public at least has an opportunity to learn about them, you know, the better that'll be to get public engagement a little bit sooner.
And I don't disagree with that, but there are times when they can't. The idea isn't fully baked yet.
No, and I agree with you.
And that's where it comes out in, in these, these staff meetings that, that we attend. And we can, don't call it a two by two, call it a staff meeting. Call it a planning meeting. And if you wanna show up, great. If not, great. I plan to attend because they're informative, they're useful. They're non-threatening, they're very casual, and the staff does an amazing job at presenting an argument for or against an idea. And by the way, if, if we're against something, it, 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 it never, it makes it, it never makes it here. And there are plenty, plenty of examples of that.
And I think that's the stuff that needs to be published as well. I think it would be beneficial for the public to know what's not happening, just as much as they learn what is happening, when it's happening. So-
Well, maybe it doesn't have to be a hundred percent either way, right? I mean, couldn't we move to a more of a work session model? But if needed, have two by two for items that the staff, the more raw items?
I can tell you when we used to do work sessions, this was two boards ago, we didn't get much accomplished those two years. It was a highly dysfunctional board. Our staff had no idea what to do because we didn't have these two by twos and you could just, we'd come to these formal sessions. I mean, unless, I mean, people were bringing popcorn because they were afraid what was gonna come out of the mouths of commissioners and, um, it was dysfunctional.
Are we dysfunctional?
No, I'm not saying we're dysfunctional, but I'm saying work did not get done because we didn't have those extra meetings to, to discuss all of these things that happened. So-
I feel like, you know, we're being held to their standard and not our own. And so we've been professional. We're here to work with the staff. The staff does an amazing job. I can't say it enough. Um, I've, I came to the first meeting of the traffic study. There weren't a lot of people here. And when one or two complained, I defended the staff. And so, I'm here for the staff. I'm here for the residents. I'm here to do the job I was elected to do. And I just wanna do it in the best possible way and the most, the way that people feel that they're involved. That's all. And I feel like I hear Charlie say chilling effect and I hear you saying that the staff was worried. If I have made anyone feel that way, I haven't heard about it.
And I, and I would agree. We do have a little bit of PTSD, right?
Right.
There, there's a way that we got comfortable and, and, and a lot of it was in the familiarity of the two by two. And again, not to, I, I don't wanna harp on that, but, but this, I mean, again, I would agree. We're still early on. We're taking baby steps. Um, and, and that's, that's natural. It's a necessary part. I think Charlie, if I could, um, maybe spitball here. If, if it's a staff meeting and it can't be recorded, is it appropriate for the board members in their participation to speak to what degree of, of, of discussion occurred from their perspective and not necessar- it's not filmed? But they can, then everybody can decide what they feel needs to be transparent and what doesn't?
The danger of a staff meeting is still gonna come under a public record because what you record, that, that's a public record, that, that recording.
And I'm not saying that we're recording it. I'm just saying that-
You're saying that you can speak from the dais after the meeting has occurred as to your perspective on a particular issue?
Okay.
But we can do that anyway?
Right, right. It just, just to be clear, because again, I, I don't think the point is to silence the fact that it occurred. It's just cherry picking. What do you think is relevant enough for your constituents or the public compared to what either Jeff writes down in his activity report and, and publishes or what, um, Jason or Tracy might feel is, is relevant? Does that make sense?
So I, I've, I've been silent and, and listening to most of this. I, I think my concern as your manager is, you know, i- it's okay to have different thoughts, different philosophies, different votes, all that kinda stuff. But it, it's, I do feel like it will be challenging to, you know, continue a way that not everybody is agreeable to doing just to bring business to the town. So, that's my concern. Or not ag- that's not completely agreeable to the board, I'm sorry, of the town. Can we do that? Yes, absolutely. We can, um, move the business forward, have the two by twos, um, boost the outcomes, all those great things. Who wants to show up can show up. Hopefully, everybody would. But that's just, that's, that's the concern I have.
Well, one thing that, that I'll, I'll say, Jeff, and I, I really respect and I really appreciate your desire for complete and total harmonious approval moving forward. I think on this particular issue, if we were to put a vote to it today, we know how it would go. But, and I think we're okay to live with that at this point. I think there's been some good ideas and some good alternatives that have been suggested on how we could make the two by, the content of these sort of two by two staff meetings a little bit more public. There are mechanisms for doing that. I think Brenda, you make a very good point when you say that commissioners can speak to it at the dais at the following meeting. And I think that that's a very good point. So if we do see something that's occurring in these meetings that the public should know about it, we still have the ability to make that public. And I think that that's what's most important and that's what we're trying to achieve, um, with this conversation is to ju- try and make things a little bit more public.
And, and I think that's a, uh, I think that the key thing you said there that I, that I nee- needed to hear is, is that, you know, you'll be okay moving forward this way as, I guess previously decide.
Charlie?
I'm not trying to take one side or the other here. But also, let me add to that. One more thing based on what you've just said, Mayor. The, the discussions at the two by twos are not confidential. It's not a closed session. Just because it's not open doesn't mean it's closed. So the content of that meeting can be discussed by any commissioner anytime. And feel free to do that. I, I'm not trying to put a quietus on anybody talking about that meeting. It's just, my only point was, the recording is gonna be dangerous.
Is that something the entire board can be comfortable with at this point? All right. That gives us, I think, enough guidance at this point, um, begrudgingly or not. But again, I, I think to Charlie's point, these are not closed meetings and we can't speak publicly about the contents of them. So, if we feel something comes up that needs public opinion sooner than later, then we can certainly make that clear to the public. Alrighty. Thank you.
I have a question. The, I'm looking for my phone because I don't have my computer. But the, um, who's the procedure here on page? Now, the one that's highlighted in blue is what you were recommending to the change to be?
Yes, and if you're asking a question about number seven, that was just a suggested text based on the discussion that may occur tonight. However, if that does not warrant that text, that is, that is not being recommended for revision. That was just there for, for context in case you decided to do something different.
All right, so that's a clarification.
I do have one, a- and this was just addressing what Ms. Murphy said earlier. If I recall, we moved general comments to the beginning just so that people didn't have to sit through a two-hour meeting. If they just wanted to say a general comment, that was why we moved it up front. So, you know, maybe, and I think that works well. Maybe if, if you sat through a full, the presentations and then had a thought from that, maybe when you come to the next meeting when we would actually vote, you would get to speak in general comments before we vote. And so that could be something, a way to speak on something that we had the presentation on.
Yeah, the goal there was just to consolidate what was going on. And as you see, you get to the end of the meeting and things get fairly thin. So, we were just sort of accepting the reality of, of what was really happening. But yeah, the beginning comments, the opening comments, they are open for everybody to speak on any topic. And then the agenda is published ahead of time and the agenda packet is also published ahead of time. So you can see what we're looking at if you wanna take the time to look at it. So it's, it's definitely there and folks can speak on that entirety of that packet if they wish at the beginning comments, uh, during the public comments.
Uh, and from my reco- recollection, just to add something to that, I, I don't recall really hardly anybody speaking at the general public comments at the end of the meeting.
They didn't wanna wait for the whole thing.
Mostly people at the beginning.
Won't help to have a space there though, just in case people wanted to.
It doesn't really hurt. I was thinking we would take it out just because we're not doing it. But if we want to leave it in, then we need to just start putting it in the agenda again.
But don't they have to sign up before the meeting so they may not have signed up for the end?
That's what I was thinking about too.
They still have the ability to speak even at the next meeting?
Theoretically, theoretically, based on what the practice is, is that first public comment was for anything on the agenda. The second public comment was for anything that was said afterwards or anything that anyone else wanted to add to that, which, that would be a separate public comment sheet. So you would have a general comment, two general comment sheets, one for the beginning, one for the end.
So would they have to sign up to talk at the end at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes. Unless you wanted to use that same sheet for both public comments.
I don't know how anybody would sign up at the end of the agenda meeting that they wouldn't wanna sign up for at the beginning. I guess it's, uh, trying to process that unless they heard something. But then if they heard something they wanted to comment on, then it would be, you know, too late if they didn't sign up if they wanted to react to something.
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking. You wouldn't know you'd wanna react to something until you heard it.
Yeah.
In, in the public comments, they can say whatever they want, right? Right, Charlie? I mean, it doesn't have to be just that agenda. It could be whatever's on their mind. That's what I'm saying. If we open it up in the- Anything you want, right? Getting in a dense space? You have, but once you're, you're stationed, whatever people want, it's a very, very small. Public comment of yours, they're not gonna be public. Open it up, just leave it any time, anything.
That's understood.
That's understood.
And if, and I've happened to step off through this, imagine if you were to zoom in, you may not wanna open that up immediately, because you don't know what somebody's gonna say and what nasty language came across that zoom in, and you don't wanna hear that.
So I think it's really a matter of we either update the procedure to reflect the current action or we adjust the current action to abide by the procedure. So I'm fine adjusting the current action to abide by the procedure since that's what's already written.
What's written? The comments at the beginning.
Beginning and end.
So.
Agenda comments at the beginning, general comments at the end, is what the procedure currently says.
I would just say amend the policy, the procedure.
So they're all at the beginning?
Yeah.
Alright, well, this is something that we'll be voting on, I think, in a couple weeks. We could. Yeah, and that's a fair point.
This is just up for information right now.
This is up for information, it's not up for a vote. So again, Pamela, I think your comments are well taken. Uh, so I think it's something we should all consider over the next two weeks.
And you can make any revisions that you want. These are just suggested revisions just for housekeeping purposes. But you can revise anything in these rules of procedure, they're your rules.
We'll have to make the chocolates legally binding then. Alrighty, so next up is town leadership reports. Um, we got Jeff, we got Dina and Todd.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so don't forget that picture day is in two weeks, four thirty uh, up here on location. And those will be the professional pictures taken. There'll be uh, group pictures and individual pictures of both board and department heads. So uh, we'll, we'll be here that day already for other reasons too, but that's just a reminder. Uh, we received the appropriation money from the state. So three point two million dollars. Uh, we'll utilize that money again just to remind everybody on the rec barn and uh, reimburse our uh, our acquisition uh, our startup cost of that, and then also pay uh, down the debt on the acquisition of that, uh, fully paid for. And then uh, purchase of police equipment as well as reimburse ourselves for the Cutherson crosswalk and beacon work.
So does that cover the entire cost out of the rec barn? The startup costs and the reinvestment, reverberate, everything?
Yes, it will cover the entire, the entire cost.
That's outstanding. Getting that money from the state was a real coup.
And of course, uh, in, in getting that, what we, what we do strategically with that, that money as long as we can is we, we invest that into our trust account to gain as much interest as we can. So we'll take advantage of that uh, while we're uh, also utilizing it, paying down on that debt. Uh, we, we, we will though, uh, have to pay it off by October of twenty twenty five cause that was one of the uh, uh, things they said, oh, by the way, after uh, after the fact, but that's okay. So we'll have the money to um, to do that. So uh, another side note, uh, myself, uh, Melody and Dina got to see the Southwestern Regional Library today at a meeting over there. So that was a very impressive facility. I think the public is uh, really going to enjoy that space. So I was, I was very impressed. Uh, this week, the town also is receiving the Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Project Award at the NC State or the NC Main Street Conference. Uh, the award ceremony is tomorrow evening. We have representatives from the town already there, our business development department. We have additional staff that will be going tomorrow. Uh, engineering and public services staff along with the uh, general contractor will be there to receive the award as well. So all excited to receive another award for uh, great work by uh, by the staff there and, and what made uh, Matt's hair gray is that project. Um, and let's see, he handed me a note here, uh, for the traffic survey. Uh, let's see, his note here says, the mobile app is much less flexible in how it can be modified and screen size further impacts utility. We're working on that, but it is more complicated than it sounds. So that's the additional leadership note. And that is all I have, thank you. Certification? Which certification? Oh, yeah, uh, our accreditation.
Accreditation.
Main Street, uh, yes, I did, I did not, but uh, uh, I will do that. Is that we did receive our accreditation for uh, uh, from the downtown uh, or from the North Carolina Main Street Association uh, through work from our business development department as well as the Downtown Wax Saw Association. So that is our second year in a row that we received accreditation. So we're real proud about that and how we've been able to uh, build that program. Uh, and of course, the NC's Main Street program is, is seeing that different, difference and uh, uh, giving us uh, positive uh, uh, grades. And we're gonna keep trying to build, build on that. And they've also provided us some good critiques too of where we can still improve what we're doing. And so we will take those to heart and hopefully be able to uh, improve on our uh, credentials that we received this time and have a higher score this next time. So that'll be our goal.
Dina, Parks and Rec, uh, something pretty cool happened last week I heard about?
You were there.
That's right.
That's right. So I wanted to give y'all a heads up on all things coming up on Park and Rec with uh, programs, events and facilities. Again, I'm Dina Sabinski, I'm your Park and Rec Director. Our wonderful program guide goes to June, so please check it out, is on the website and on social. Upcoming um, program wise, we have Hero tomorrow. It is Grace Presbyterian Church, Wackawaw Marvin. It's at three thirty for Hero. Please come and join us for St. Patty's Fun. Um, the following week is gonna be at Harrison Park. And then the following week after that is gonna be at the new rec barn. So we're excited to have them there. Also, a lot of our programs that were at other satellite areas such as Zumba, Yoga Ballet are gonna be at the rec barn now. So you'll see those transitions over to that facility, which we're super excited about. And then we also have our partnership with the library with the Little Cooks and Fun Books, um, that is next week. And Edible Art is next week as well, and that is at the McDonald House still. Couple things that are happening um, this weekend, so everybody is aware of. The Community Corner is gonna be hopping um, this weekend with Mary O'Neill's St. Patty's Day um, event. Uh, so we help with the rental portion of that. Just understand there's lots of pedestrians walking around downtown, so be aware of that and keep everybody safe. And also um, our WA friends told you about the opening weekend at Nesbit. Again, lots of kids running around um, that area. Please be aware of that as you come in and out of uh, Nesbit Park and the school cause they utilize the school for overflow. Again, the rec barn uh, opened on Friday night. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and supporting. We had a great turnout, super excited about the space. We had an overwhelming amount of emails about rentals um, over the weekend. So we're super excited to be able to provide for our citizens um, in this space. The rec barn uh, hours are online now and on the door of the center. So if anybody has any questions, but they also can call the office. Um, it is Monday through Friday, eight to five, Saturday from twelve to four. We're closed on Sundays at this time. Upcoming events, uh, we have a huge busy day on April the thirteenth. Um, that is shred day here at PD um, that morning. We also have litter sweep um, that morning as well. That's gonna be all over Waxaw. Um, volunteers are welcome and needed. Um, we can, you can sign up online and on our social. We are adding trails to litter sweep this year, which is really cool. So get your boots on and come with us. Also that day, we have earth day, and that's gonna be at Town Creek a little bit later in the afternoon. Um, so again, we're working with our community partners, the forestry, um, the art box. Um, and then uh, our Arbor Day um, uh, community partners as well to make that a grand event on, for Earth Day. That is all I have to share with you tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Matthews, you're up next.
So we uh, got all the speed humps installed that we had, ended up with twelve that y'all voted on to install in Kirtan, Millbridge, North Providence. Uh, we three quarters of the way trimming trees in Millbridge. It seemed like we went from sucking leaves to trimming the trees, so. Uh, we replaced thirty-three panels of sidewalk in Millbridge due to the roots getting up under, making a trip hazard. Uh, working with Dina, Jeff, Matt, um, James on the park, trying to get the best work out of it. Uh, we got some sidewalk and pavement issues, so we're working through that. Uh, we pick up, this is just for the public, we pick up uh, white goods every Friday. If anybody has a refrigerator or grill or something like that, they can call in and we pick it up for free. Uh, we're getting the cemetery ready for Easter. I don't know, let y'all know, but on Easter Sunday, there's two or three churches that come out to the cemetery and have sunrise service. So it's pretty cool out there. Uh, we've been working downtown. We put out five hundred and fifty belted pine needles and pre-emerged and planted grass and everything, trying to get it, it's springtime. Uh, working on getting the lawnmowers ready and just for everybody. Uh, my guys go out and mow the right ways on the highway so everybody can just watch out for them. We got strode on the lawnmowers. But it gets kinda dangerous out there sometimes, so everybody can just be aware of that. Uh, we got a water tap at town campus last week. Uh, we got a water tap at Jekyll and Hyde this week. And working with uh, Union County Public Works on some sewer taps and water taps that they put in the wrong place on Miller Drive in North Providence, trying to get them straightened out. But they're working with the, so they don't, they don't take care of it. Other than that, it's about it. Any questions? It's funny y'all talking about the transportation study and all. When I was a young kid around here, we used to, there was a joke going around that Waxaw had a sign that, welcome to Waxaw, and a hundred percent come by. Cause we only have one red light.
Exactly. Thank you. Uh, commissioner comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? You're so adjourned, thank you very much, have a good night.